The vote call, Rachel Schlesky is here. Gladys Cooper.
Here.
Richard Coley.
Here.
Richard Donelli.
Here.
Kathy Johnson.
Here.
Roderick Corr.
Here.
David Trina is also absent. Kathy Malinaro.
Here.
Manuela Parmeras.
Here.
Marley Santos.
Here.
And Hagee Scoobenell.
Here.
Sorry, I know one is here.
I was going to get one of students to read it. Who wants to volunteer?
Duncan.
All right.
All right.
Good. The state has made a tremendous effort on attendance and we have been working on it as well. May was going to be here tonight, but you'll do just fine. Whereas, yeah, you can do that.
All right, great. Mayor's proclamation, be it hereby known to all that, the mayor and citizens of the city of Danbury proclaim September as attendance awareness month. Whereas, attendance is essential to student achievement and graduation, for this reason, we take the month of September to bring attention to reducing chronic absenteeism rates. And whereas, chronic absence or missing 10% or more in school for any reason, or just two or three days a month, is a proven predictor of academic trouble and dropout rates. Chronic absence also predicts lower reading proficiency, course failure, and eventual dropout. We could damage our communities and our local economy, and whereas, improving attendance and reducing chronic absence takes commitment, collaboration, and tailored approaches to challenges and strengths in each community. Absenteeism is also undermining efforts to encourage struggling schools, since it's hard to measure improvements in classroom construction if students are not in class to benefit from them. And whereas, attendance gaps among groups of students often turn into achievement gaps. The impact of chronic absence hits students in low-income communities and children of color in particular hard. Chronic absence exacerbates the achievement gaps, and students from low-income communities are more likely to be chronically absent and more likely to be affected academically by missing school. And whereas, chronic absence can be significantly reduced when schools, families, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from getting to school. Attendance Awareness Month encourages broad community engagement and sustained civic passion so that families can get their children's school every day. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark Rebound, as mayor of the city of Danbury, do hereby proclaim September as Attendance Awareness Month, and we support the initiative efforts to bring attention to the importance of school attendance. Signed this first day of September 2018 in the City Hall of Danbury, Connecticut. (applause). Good mayor.
Would you pass it down?
Next on the agenda is a vote participation. We don't have anybody up signed up. Would anyone like to speak? One for vote participation. Bring it along to the consent calendar. Oh, sorry. That's... Please. The Board of Education approved the items on the consent calendar. It's number 18-1 and one is recommended. Do you have a second? Marley, any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I do have the, in the minutes of our last meeting, in the section where I mentioned the incident regarding the school lunch, I think with the way that it was described, it's missing some information where I mentioned that the lunch was thrown away. So I'm trying to find it here.
When you find it, please speak into the microphone.
Sure. One second. Yes, it says, Ms. Parmeras told the board that over the summer period, the parent coordinator had discussed lunch policy at the school's party. One student does not have money for lunch or hasn't paid, and they should read, and the school lunch is thrown out in front of the students. And for us, we best see that incident if indeed happened.
Added under Board Reports, Communications, and Comments.
Exactly. Can everyone take this place to get to the microphone? Sure. I can't hear back here. Sure. So, in the minutes of our last meeting, under Board Reports, Communications, and Comments, it's the fourth paragraph down, and it reads, the information is to be added that the comments that I made describe an incident where not only did the student not have money to pay for lunch or hasn't paid, is that there's been reports in the community, there's been instances where the lunch is thrown out in front of the students. That's all. And I ask for it to be investigated whether or not it's true.
Also, just to know, she's correct my first name. Does that make sense? Okay. Okay. So, do we have to make a motion to amend?
She corrected minutes.
Okay. Okay. All in favor?
Right.
opposed? Extention? What she carries? Employee representative? Do we have anyone from Great Plains School?
I'm Keisha Smith, the president of Great Plains, and we thank you.
Keisha, if you need to sit down, if you can, use the mic.
Oh, they're going to sit there. I'm going to use the microphone. They're going to use it.
You don't have to sit down to use the mic. Please.
Well, I'm Keisha Smith, principal of Great Plains Elementary School. I would like to thank the board for allowing us this opportunity to share a few things about Great Plains. We're pleased to be here. Each elementary school, middle school, and high school are doing awesome things, so we just want to share a few things about our school.
One leader. One leader. Jason Williams, an anti...
You don't have to worry. This is good.
(music playing) I'll tell the world I'll sing a song. It's a better place since you came along. Since you came along. There touches sunlight through the trees. There kisses are the ocean breeze. It's alright when you're with me. Ahhh. You're my favorite thing. Ahhh. All the happiness you bring. It feels like I opened my eyes again. And the colors are golden and bright again. It's a song in my heart. I feel like I belong. It's a better place since you came along. It's a better place since you came along. I see the whole world in your eyes. Just like I've known you all my life. It's alright. So I pour my heart into your hands. Just like you really understand. Love the way I am. Ahhh. You're my favorite thing. Ahhh. All the happiness you bring. It feels like I opened my eyes again. And the colors are golden and bright again. It's a song in my heart. I feel like I belong. It's a better place since you came along. It's a better place since you came along. Ahhh. Now I'm alright. Now I'm alright. Everything's alright. It feels like I opened my eyes again. And the colors are golden and bright again. It's a song in my heart. I feel like I belong. It's a better place since you came along. It's a better place since you came along. (applause).
Good evening, Board of Ed members and district leaders. It's our pleasure to be with you tonight during the Great Plains Spotlight. I would like to speak to you on the behalf of the Great Plains PTO. My name is Michelle Bigco, and I'm one of the members. We have three other board members who are unable to be here because we have a PTO event tonight at Bounce. But Taz McKenzie, Julie Bell, and Roger Chapri, also their spouses, who we get to help us as well. At our PTO, we represent about 170 families at Great Plains. Our families have diverse backgrounds, and we support all of our families by having translators available at our meetings, providing material in multiple languages, and working together as a community at Great Plains. Some people ask us as an organization greatness. How do we support greatness as a PTO? Our vision as an organization is to create a community of parents to support the school. We believe that the school community is important, and it takes a village to ensure greatness among the students. The PTO will do this by fundraising, PTO meetings, creating community events such as ice cream socials and pumpkin painting. For example, like I mentioned, we have our Bounce fundraiser tonight. This is a great way for our families to get together and support Great Plains. The PTO is part of the Say Hello work down at Great Plains. We support the school in making T-shirts and attending events after school, and we believe that we can help kids do their best by working together as a community of parents. Our PTO raises money to provide materials for Great Plains students. Our funds purchase online resources for students to use that will enrich the content and learning in their school. Another way we give back to the school is providing additional summer reading books for students. If students are unable to go to the library or can't afford books, we as a PTO provide additional books and materials. Our organization believes that by working with teachers, administration, and support staff, that's our village, we can support students to be great. We believe in greatness at Great Plains. The school supports us by providing us time to meet and also curriculum advice. The school provides the PTO materials and data reports so we can understand the objectives of the curriculum and help support our parents in greatness at each grade level. We support parents in times of need by making meals for their family, supporting the school's social worker, and fulfilling requests for families where children have lost a parent or a parent is struggling with health issues. That's what Great Plains PTO does. Thank God. Once again, thank you so much for your time, and please feel free to stop by our PTO events. We're so lucky to have Ms. Smith, and we're so lucky to have 170 families that stand with our kids, and we would love everybody to come see Great Plains be great.
Hello. My name is Patty Woodmeyer. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Great Plains, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about what we as the Great Plains teacher community or staff community do well. One thing we do is we maintain high expectations and standards for our students and therefore are able to achieve growth. Our test scores reflect that. We have earned school distinction. We provide feedback to our students, and we do motivate our kids to do their best, and then we do celebrate the successes. We work to foster and maintain collegial relationships and growth mindset. All our grade levels work together and across the grade levels to share materials, ideas, information. We work as a team, and strong leadership is evident in our building. We are willing to implement new programs and ideas if we find that this is going to help our kids, so we don't shy away from change. We're a smaller school, and therefore we're able to build stronger and deep-lasting relationships with our students. The staff knows almost every kid regardless of grade level. We generally care about the well-being of our children and our staff members and support students and their families during times of need and crisis. We encourage and achieve consistent parent communication and involvement. We have a very active PTO, and I as a teacher have been a beneficiary of the involvement. We've found materials that I wouldn't have otherwise been able to get, so thank you very much. We do have translators, and often they are volunteer staff members that are available at most meetings. Parents, students, and teachers participate in being the knights, excuse me, in many other activities like the school socials and kindness activities. And staff is welcoming to parents. And another note, too, we do try and get new technology, and we're using the Remind app to be able to reach out to our parents, because we know how everybody's attached to their devices, and that's a quick way to reach out, and that's been working pretty well. Now, there are some ways that we do want to improve at Great Plains, and technology is one thing. We don't all have big technology or working technology that we would like to have in our classrooms, like smart boards, iPad, mounted projectors. That would be great. Of course, also PD that goes along with the new technology, so that is something we would love to have and would embrace. Also, more enrichment programs for students that are advanced learners. You know, we tend to focus on kids that are falling behind, and so we'd love to get more help and also more programs and training to help the kids who are already higher achieved. Of course, more support for the integration of science and social studies curriculum, so that is definitely an area we would need help with and would like to improve upon. And of course, increase resources for our ELL population. So our population at Great Plains is changing, and we do have more ELL students than we had in the past. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to share. You all have a blessed evening and good night.
Oh, I apologize. In front of you, I placed some data and some information, and you probably already go over this in your board meetings, but it is as Mrs. Woodmeyer explained, with growth and with the parent participation and assistance, we're able to move our students. So we do try different things to help our children learn, and we're very creative and do a whole lot of things outside of the box. So you'll notice wherever we start, in one year, the next year we improve, and the year after. I just put a place between individuals so that you could share and see the information. Of course, we know a lot of us saw this good thing over here at Danbury, so I want you all to share and communicate and to know each other. But the data speaks for itself, and we continue to work hard and do our best to support now through our children at Great Plains with this district. Again, thank you and have a good night.
We have our student representatives here this evening.
Hi, my name is Alicia Aberschaff. I'm the vice president of BOG and Interpreters.
And I'm Joanna Wenchel, and I'm the director.
So we do have a few announcements. The opening of school one three on the 30th, and everyone was very helpful in transition to the new G building, the freshman building. It opened on time, and freshmen are really liking it. It's definitely like what it is. It's a really great school, so it definitely helped to leave hallway congestion as well. There were a lot of traffic, and all the freshmen are in there for most of the day, so that helps a lot. We do have a new schedule, which is the block schedule, and those are 83-minute classes. And it was pretty hectic at the beginning, but after the first week, it was completely resolved all the issues. And we used to have a new period called Flex for 45 minutes each day, and this is for kids to get extra help with the classes that they're struggling in and falling behind in. And they can also get extra help from any teacher that they want, or if they don't need any, then they can have a study hall where they can finish all of their homework. And it's been especially helpful for us, for BOG, so we can get all the homecoming stuff up and all the events for our school.
This week at the school is Spirit Week. We have done red, white, and blue day on Monday, Decades Day on Tuesday, and Character Day, that was today. Tomorrow is Grade Day, so each grade will wear the same color, and Friday is Orange and Blue Day. And then the Homecoming Football Game is Friday night at 7:00, which Mr. Donovan wanted for you to tell you that you're all ready to. And the Homecoming Dance is Saturday night at 7:00, and the theme is Into the Woods. You can also follow our Twitter, @DanburyBOG, for updates regarding this week and for the rest of the year. And also coming up is the PSAT that the freshmen, sophomore, and juniors will take on October 10th, and we just wanted to thank you in advance for allowing us to be able to do that.
How's the schedule? How's the schedule in progress? For you, meantime, are you getting through all of it?
The new schedule?
Yeah. I'm just curious.
Personally, I enjoy it. I like the fact that the classes, yeah, they're a little long and longer than we're used to, being that we gave them 45-minute classes, but I like the fact that we don't have the same class every day, and kind of we're able to switch it up, and we're able to get more done and be focused for a longer time with the blocks. And then with Flex, I personally find it really helpful. It allows us to schedule where we want to go and what we need help with, and it allows for students to not have to come into school early or stay after school, so they can get all the extra help that they need in order to go to like support their jobs after school. They can get all their help in school.
I know, because Mr. Donovan and the students were looking for time to be able to do that, so they crafted it on the day. The big thing for the board, they're able to purchase a, I'm going to say accounting, attendance system that works with ours. And as you said, if you want to have a meeting or meet with a teacher, you can schedule yourself, and then it prints out your attendance for that day, so there's an accountability piece. So it's kind of a 360 program of attendance, and it provides time for you as well. I'm glad it's going. After the first week was a little shaky, but it's going okay.
Yeah.
Glad it's good. Good to hear. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, presentation by Annie and Kim Morgan.
Annie, go to the introduction.
While they set up, I'd like to talk just a little bit about some of our community partnerships that we have. Dr. Sal and I attended a great meeting this afternoon of our new volunteers who will be coming on board through the Kids Program, Kids in Danbury Schools, which is a reading program that will be taking place at five more schools. This is in collaboration with ARC and PJ Reapold. Charles Schlapp was in charge of it over the past few years, but he's retired and he's gone to Mestic. And so we picked it up as a school district, as one of our community partners, and so far we probably have close to 77 readers that will be working in our schools. That's just part of one of the initiatives at five of the schools. We also have Jericho Partnership that does a lot of work with us too in reading for our students. But tonight, what I'd like to celebrate with the board and with our collaborators is a project that started a couple years ago, and we'll go into more of the details, of working with United Way, working with our school liaison at Park Avenue, and under the leadership of Data Graphic, to really look at how can we increase parent skills, student skills, right from birth, and help with transitions to school, summer programs, playgroups, a whole group of things, including the garden program and walking school bus. And so this has been an exciting few years in this project. We weren't too sure where it was going. Funders kind of in and out, but United Way has really kept the funding going so that we could run the programs. And so tonight, what Kim Morgan, who is the CEO of United Way, Josh behind me, and Carolyn LaFleur, who is the Community Impact Coordinator, they're going to present the data that we have from this program. And when I first showed it to the cabinet a couple weeks ago, I heard one of our members of the cabinet saying, "This is really impressive data." And so we're really excited about it. I'm going to turn it over to Kim and Carolyn and to Josh to talk to you more about the Strong Start program at Park Avenue.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you. As Ann mentioned, I'm the CEO of United Way of Western Connecticut. And we started a project, you can do the first slide. We started our project in 2014. Our goal was, at that point, to prepare children for kindergarten, so that by the time they arrived at Park Avenue, and we were selected in a school looking for a neighborhood we could focus on, that they would be more prepared. We were concerned that children were arriving at the doorstep of this public school system not ready. And we focused mainly on parent participation and parent education for the most part. So fast forward to today, we have two years of data, and we're very excited about what the data is telling us. We saw it last year. I wondered if it was going to be a blip or if it was going to carry through, and it's now carried through for two years, which is why we're coming to you. The funded programs that we supported in the last four years include, as Ann mentioned, the playgroups with the Family Learning Center. So we fund the Family Learning Center to run these groups with children mainly targeted towards children who do not have a formal preschool experience. We fund at Advance to come in and do parent workshops and transition nights at the school. We've been funding the Summer Skills Program for children who are highest risk and are about to arrive at kindergarten, sometimes moving into the country within weeks or months with no experience. We've been funding Abridado Prizes, which is a parent program designed, evidence-based design for Latino parents of young children. And we then funded a kindergarten and a walking school bus. So what started as really a project to work with children before they arrived at school, blended into a partnership that's really grown with the school. And underneath all of this is the position that we fund at Maria Bartis Fields as the parent liaison, and really is essential to the success of this program and the connection. And then we can't say enough about Data Graphic. I'll put a plug in, we're honoring who has our hometown hero this year for Danbury at our event in December, so we're just, we've been thrilled with our work at Park Avenue. So here is a bit of data. We looked at spring, spring scores in 2017 and 2018 on the STAR Literacy Assessment. The first slide you're looking at is assessing all students and then pulling out of that group any student who's, who they, the child was involved or the parents were involved in one or more of the programs. We used a 45, 45th percentile rating for year-over-year comparison, recognizing that this last spring, the requirement up to 50%, but we wanted to compare apples to apples. And so the first year that we were able to get the data and measure, we saw that 48% was the aggregate, and 57% of United Way
Hi, my name is Alicia Abner-Schiff. I'm the Vice President of BOG Education.
And I'm Joanna Wenchel, and I'm the Director.
So we do have a few announcements. The opening school one three on the 30th, and everyone was very helpful in transition to the new G building, the freshman building. It opened on time, the freshmen are really liking it. It's definitely like what it is. It's a really great school, so. It definitely helped to lead hallway congestion as well. There were a lot of traffic, and all the freshmen are in there for most of the day, so that helps a lot. We do have a new schedule, which is the block schedule, and those are eighty-three minute classes. And it was pretty hectic at the beginning, but after the first week it was completely resolved all the issues. And we used to have a new period called Flex for forty-five minutes each day. And this is for kids to get extra help with the classes that they're struggling in and falling behind in. And they can also get extra help from any teacher that they want, or if they don't need any, then they can have a study hall where they can finish all of their homework. And it's been especially helpful for us, for BOG, so we can get all the homecoming stuff up and all the events for our school.
This week at the school is Spirit Week. We have done red, white, and blue day on Monday, Decades Day on Tuesday, and Character Day. That was today. Tomorrow is Grade Day, so each grade will wear the same color. And Friday is Orange and Blue Day. And then the homecoming football game is Friday night at seven, which Mr. Donovan wanted for you to tell you that you're all ready to. And the homecoming dance is Saturday day at seven, and the theme is Into the Woods. You can also follow our Twitter, @DanburyBOG, for updates regarding this week and for the rest of the year. And also coming up is the PSAT that the freshmen, sophomore, and juniors will take on October 10. And we just wanted to thank you in advance for allowing us to be able to do that.
How's the scheduling work? In the meantime, are you getting through all of it?
The new schedule?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Personally, I enjoy it. I like the fact that the classes, yeah, they're a little long, and longer than we're used to, being that we came from forty-five minute classes, but I like the fact that we don't have the same class every day, and kind of were able to switch it up, and were able to get more done, and be focused for a longer time with the blocks. And then with Flex, I personally find it really helpful. It allows us to schedule where we want to go and what we need help with. And it allows for students to not have to come into school early or stay after school, so they can get all the extra help that they need in order to go to like support their jobs after school. They can get all their help in school.
I know, because Mr. Donovan and the students were looking for time to be able to do that, so they crafted it out in the day. The big thing for the board, they're able to purchase a, I'm going to say an accounting attendance system that works with ours. And as you said, if you want to have a meeting or meet with a teacher, you can schedule yourself, and then it prints out your attendance for that day. So there's an accountability piece. So it's kind of a three sixty program attendance, and it provides time for you as well. I'm glad it's going. After the first week was a little shaky, but it's going okay. Glad it's good, good here. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, a presentation by Andy and Kim Morgan.
Andy, go to the introduction.
While they set up, I'd like to talk just a little bit about some of our community partnerships that we have. Dr. Sal and I attended a great meeting this afternoon of our new volunteers who will be coming on board through the Kids Program, Kids in Danbury Schools, which is a reading program that will be taking place at five more schools. This is in collaboration with ARC and PJ Reapole. Charlie Schlot was in charge of it over the past few years, but he's retired and he's gone to Mestic. And so we picked it up as a school district, as one of our community partners. And so far, we probably have close to seventy-seven readers that'll be working in our schools. That's just part of one of the initiatives at five of the schools. We also have Jericho Partnership that does a lot of work with us too in reading for our students. But tonight, what I'd like to celebrate with the board and with our collaborators is a project that started a couple of years ago, and we'll go into more of the details, of working with United Way, working with our school liaison at Park Avenue, and under the leadership of Data Graphic, to really look at how can we increase parent skills, student skills right from birth, help with transitions to school, summer programs, playgroups, a whole group of things, including the garden program and walking school bus. And so this has been an exciting few years in this project. We weren't too sure where it was going. Funders kind of in and out, but United Way has really kept the funding going so that we could run the programs. And so tonight, what Kim Morgan, who is the CEO of United Way, Josh behind me, and Carolyn LaFleur, who is the Community Impact Coordinator, they're going to present the data that we have from this program. And when I first showed it to the cabinet a couple of weeks ago, I heard one of our members of the cabinet say, "This is really impressive data." And so we're really excited about it. I'm going to turn it over to Kim and Carolyn and to Josh to talk to you more about the Strong Start program at Park Avenue.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you. As Ann mentioned, I'm the CEO of United Way of Western Connecticut. And we started a project, you can do the first slide. We started our project in 2014. Our goal was, at that point, to prepare children for kindergarten so that by the time they arrived at Park Avenue, and we were selected in a school looking for a neighborhood we could focus on, that they would be more prepared. We were concerned that children were arriving at the doorstep of this public school system not ready. And we focused mainly on parent participation and parent education for the most part. So fast forward to today, we have two years of data, and we're very excited about what the data is telling us. We saw it last year. I wondered if it was going to be a blip or if it was going to carry through, and it's now carried through for two years, which is why we're coming to you. The funded programs that we supported in the last four years include, as Ann mentioned, the playgroups with the Family Learning Center. So we fund the Family Learning Center to run these groups with children mainly targeted towards children who do not have a formal preschool experience. We fund at-advance to come in and do parent workshops and transition nights at the school. We've been funding the Summer Skills Program for children who are highest risk and are about to arrive at kindergarten, sometimes moving into the country within weeks or months with no experience. We've been funding Abridado Purtas, which is a parent program designed, evidence-based design for Latino parents of young children. And we then funded a kindergarten and a walking school bus. So what started as really a project to work with children before they arrived at school blended into a partnership that's really grown with the school. And underneath all of this is the position that we fund at Maria Vargas Skills as the parent liaison, and really is essential to the success of this program and the connection. And then we can't say enough about Data Graphic. I'll put a plug in, we're honoring who has our hometown hero this year for Danbury at our event in December. So we're just, we've been thrilled with our work at Park Avenue. So here is a bit of data. We looked at spring scores in 2017 and 2018 on the STAR literacy assessment. The first slide you're looking at is assessing all students and then pulling out of that group any student who's, who they, the child was involved or the parents were involved in one or more of the programs. We used a forty-fifth percentile rating for year-over-year comparison, recognizing that this last spring, the requirement up to fifty percent, but we wanted to compare apples to apples. And so the first year that we were able to get the data and measure, we saw that forty-eight percent was the aggregate, and fifty-seven percent of the United Way-involved families were hitting the benchmark. So I thought, that's great, nine percent difference. This spring, while we saw a reduction in scores across the board, we saw from twenty-three percent up to thirty-seven percent. So we saw an even bigger jump, and that's when we started to get excited. And we asked to then take the data from this past spring and really disaggregate it in a more detailed fashion. We don't see any of the individual data, we just see the aggregate scores, but we were able to work with the school system to pull some of this apart. And so when you look at 2018, we looked at this a couple of different ways. We looked at kindergarten students with absolutely no involvement at all with programming. In that, it was about sixty-three students. And we looked at forty-six students who had some involvement. So it's similar to the slide before, but we pulled out from the larger group, the United Way-involved children. And we see an even bigger jump, percentile difference of over ten percentage points, twenty-four point six to thirty-four point eight. And then when we looked at growth from fall to spring, we also saw demonstrated difference, twenty-six percent for students with no involvement, and thirty-three percent growth for those that attended programs. We then pulled out the Summer Skills Program to look at that specifically, because we are very concerned about children that we support a lot of preschool programming, early childhood programming. And we really want to see how did children do who are in that condensed, intense environment with no experience. And it was really interesting. Kindergarten students with no United Way involvement, again, out of sixty-three students, is in the dark blue. Then you look at just Summer Skills. So it's only eight children that we pulled out, so it's a small sample size. But they did better still than the children who were not as high risk but had no programming. And then we looked at Summer Skills and other programs. So they either attended, they never attended summer school, they attended only summer school, no other programming. And then when we layered in other programming, with eleven families that jumped up. So you can see those numbers, both in the percentiles, student growth. We then looked at kindergarten students with no United Way involvement, and then kindergarten students with United Way involvement without the Summer Skills. So we wanted to see what happened when you factored out the highest-risk children. And we saw even higher growth there, which we assumed. And you look at twenty-four percent versus thirty-six percent percentile, and again, you see a difference in growth. So just to give you a frame of reference for some of the data, in 2017, eighteen, we saw forty-six out of one hundred and eight students. Families were involved in this program before they arrived in kindergarten, forty-three percent of the incoming class. And sixteen seventeen, we had seen forty-four percent, so it was very close. So even though the number jumped from eighty-nine students to one hundred and eight for the school, our percentage of families that we had engaged with was about the same. And then the demographics is also very similar. So we had a little bit of higher EL families involved with us than the total population in school. We had even with free and reduced lunch. So we wanted to make sure that we were serving the population that was reflective of the total population. And then especially when we were a little lower in that percentage. So you can see in the pie chart on the right what programs people participated in. There's four examples there of a program that we offered. And now what's not included in the data are two programs that Ann alluded to. The Community Garden, which was started last summer, so this was the second summer. It became a big community engagement opportunity. We had a lot of fathers come out, families from the neighborhood. It was really well done, and that was in large part due to Maria and her husband, and Dave. And then the walking school bus is what it sounds like. It's kids walking to school. For many of us, we did that when we were younger, and it doesn't happen quite as often. And so on nice days, in the spring and the fall, we have a trail of families that we pay stipend to volunteers, and they pick up kids along the way. So by the time they get to the school, they've got a nice, large crowd. And so we're trying to look at ways to measure, does that affect attendance? Does it affect, it certainly affects tardiness, we know that. But does it affect how they do during the day if they've been out walking to school? And we're about to hopefully step into some measurement on that. And that is the partnerships. I'm happy to answer any questions. We'll be measuring the data again. We did have a major donor supporting a lot of this work alongside United Way. That funder has re-prioritized as normal, we're supporting Danbury. So we, I'm going to be presenting this to my board as well, because we need to know it's working. We want to scale it, we don't want to cut back, so we're working on that, but happy to answer any questions.
So, thank you for this, this looks wonderful, thank you. What is your biggest obstacle in getting one hundred percent of the parents to join in? What is your obstacle, because we find an obstacle also.
The biggest obstacle is we don't know who the parents are, because they're not in the school system yet. So imagine they are moving in, they don't have any connection, we really tried to build. I think what this is a testament to is parent engagement is so important. I mean, we have numbers now to show. What comes first, I don't know. Do parents who are going to be engaged join programs? And does that make a difference? You know, I couldn't tell you, but finding those parents.
How do you advertise this for the parents that are new?
We start with, and Caroline can say this a little bit more, but in the school, for siblings, right?
So Maria Vargas is really key to all of this, because she does a lot of the parent outreach. And as soon as a parent registers for kindergarten at Park Avenue, somebody connects with them when they first register. So they're trying to get them to come to the workshops even before the children start school. You know, and the playgroups, I think they've just done as much outreach as they can through siblings. But we need to do a little bit more outreach. I think we should be putting flyers along the ads, places like that, so.
And I think those feeder families come from the aunt's program as well.
Correct, so yeah, right. So we have been about forty percent of the kindergartners coming in, which is a bad reach, but I think we can reach more.
Any questions?
On your slide, it says for two years, kindergarten students score. Create, 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 it's going to spring, the numbers still down.
Mr. Genelli, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Are you on, for two years, kindergarten students score learning literacy?
That's correct, yeah.
I do not have an answer for you. I don't, I don't know if that's across the board for all schools, did something change to the way that testing happens?
Right, so I can answer.
Would you restate the question? Because I think what happens in kindergarten, they take an early literacy, and it does, it does pull out some of the students, so I couldn't hear the question.
The comparison is for a two-year period from the spring of 2017 to 2018, and the data for the spring of 2018, in both categories, for all students, as well as the other category, is down significantly from 2017. So I was just wondering what would create that particular year that would cause that problem?
Two things. First of all, there are two different cohorts, so there are two different incoming kindergarten classes. And the second reason is we had it at a forty SGP, so you had it at the fortieth percentile. In the spring, for the 2017 data, where the 2018, you had it hit the fiftieth.
Is a higher scale.
So we adjusted. You adjusted, yeah. So we looked at the forty-fifth. I don't know, so I do try to go see, Star scores aren't publicly reported. I wanted to see if it was district-wide that the Star scores went down something, because yeah, I couldn't find that data. So I don't know if that is collected.
There are more students that year too, so we don't know if the students came from a different neighborhood.
Yeah, I couldn't tell if it was a pattern, because we don't have district-wide data on Star.
But again, we're not matching comparable student. Student is just a body one body to another body.
Right, we were comparing kindergarten and first grade, but we're, it's two different years of kindergarten.
I do want to say that Park Avenue Playroom is awesome. We're gradually with that, I think we've been doing that for about four or five years. But it's absolutely incredible. The kids have different languages, different backgrounds, and somehow they communicate. It's just a phenomenal experience. And the garden that's at Park Avenue, the stuff they grow, the irrigation process that they put in, is for everybody to see. If you're a gardener, it gives you some good ideas. They just have a lot of good vegetables, so it's good work, Park Avenue's doing a good job. Thank you.
Yeah, how much did this cost?
We've been spending an average of, I would say, a hundred, a hundred and five thousand dollars a year. You know, some years we have some carry-on money, it goes up and down a little bit, but that's the target I can set for funding.
And the plan would be to find different funding sources and replicate this in other schools? And would we create this partnership with other schools, or is it just focused on Park Avenue?
Well, if I still did the same funder, I would then be going out and trying to raise money to do it at more schools. So I'd like to make sure we retain what we're doing at Park Avenue. But I think that this demonstrates, and we'll look at it again next year, but if a third year in a row comes in like this, we should be doing this at every school. If parent engagement makes that much of a difference, ten points is pretty significant on a assessment.
As I, I think anything that you choose to bring families, school, and community together is excellent. As I look at this, the coverage, and my question will be, is it for a particular group? Is it a diverse group? What is the contents of the group of kids that you're working with?
So they're reflective of the student population. On that one slide, it shows, I'm going to say the EL population was like forty. EL was sixty-seven percent, it was a little higher than the total population, which is fifty-four percent. So we have a large Hispanic population engaged, particularly for the Abridado Purtas, which is geared towards that population. It's open to everybody. Depends on the programs that they pick and how we engage them.
So my next question will be, there's no African-American parents that signed up for this program?
So this picture that you're looking at is Abridado Purtas. So it's done in Spanish, it's for Hispanic families.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Action items.
That the Board of Education approved the 2018-2019 Alliance Grant in submission to the State Department of Education in accordance with eighteen dash one zero four.
Plaided by Mr. Santos. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say hi.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions?
That the Board of Education accepted the 2018 End of Year Operating Results Analysis of Rants and Projects in accordance with eighteen dash one zero four.
Sir. Plaided by Mrs. Cooper. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say hi.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Motionaries? Two thousand nineteen, twenty school calendar?
That the Board of Education approved the 2019-2020 School Calendar in accordance with eighteen dash one zero five.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Want to oppose, Mr. Santos? Any extensions? Motionaries? Superintendent's report.
Testing, I do. I'd like to ask, the enrollment is really October first for the board, and that's really the help that everyone uses. As I mentioned, we're about eleven thousand five hundred. What we're experiencing with increased graduation requirements, students moving in, identified students, we've had to add some more sections. And priority for me is to make sure kids aren't sitting in study halls and not taking their space, and not getting credits on graduation. So we made some adjustments at the high school, primarily in the core area of English and mathematics. We've had to make some adds there. I think, and hoping we're at the end of that. I am looking at some, two other areas, particularly in special education, where we seem to have an oversubscription in mainstream class. There's some problematic, they will have to look at. So we may have to do a little more at it, but I think that would be it. Right now, we're also having some pressure with, as be with transification. You might want to work with that.
Yeah, we did have to add one full-size bus to our run, particularly the secondary tier. And as I call it, the big bubble moves up the line, we're seeing additional amount of those runs. We're seeing some late runs, it would shift and some riders shift between some runs. It's getting better. SDA is working through with lazy transportation. But we did have that one full-size so far. Possibly many, but we have, I'm not committed to that yet. I try to hold on until October to actually handle that.
Carol, is there a specific area of school? Is there a secondary school that you're seeing? Remember last year we had an issue with a lot of, you know?
I would say you're still seeing growth in the west side. I haven't, unfortunately, due to the time we've drilled that out completely yet, but you're seeing growth on that side of town, definitely. Millard primary numbers are speaking of that, that bill is up about ten percent. So there are clearly numbers there. I'd say at the bulk, still downtown, we're still seeing a lot of numbers in the downtown community as well. So I'd say those are probably two areas that at least are the biggest growth. I will get a little more data once we get into the who, what, where's.
Yeah, I'd be great to know where the enrollment is coming from.
Nick Long and McGraw is going to do an update on the board's enrollment study. Once we get the October one data solidified, we'll submit that to them, and they'll rerun a brand-new growth targets for us. As well, coming today, obviously, we're, as you guessed, we're ahead of their, they had some max numbers. We're not worried kind of shooting through those, so we're concerned about that. So we'll just more drill in again. But yeah, probably, my guess would be, maybe November timeline shows some next.
I think it all blends together with facilities.
We are, just for the board's education, we are about a hundred and fifty-some line kids, a hundred and forty kids at least at this moment. But again, we have it set October one, next year we'll release the, it'll kind of fly.
The facilities, where are we with the west side today?
Portables, it's been raining just a little bit lately. So the portals are set, they're seaming together right now as we speak. They're pushing mud back and forth, there's extra tech and Dr. monitor. We've got a couple of extra swimming pools up there right now, but they're coming along. I'd say we're probably shooting for about the middle of October, at least right now at this moment. But they're moving along, everyone's okay. Thankfully, we have the fifty kids up there to start, so we look okay there. And furniture, they're dining in there, everyone's kind of ready to go as soon as we get a little more further along. We did have to change the fire marshal for a number of doors. Every exterior classroom now is going to require they make a fire door through the code. We actually make submissions, a fire marshal, and that will list more times they've changed earlier for that. But not no major mistakes. We'll put it in by, I would say, post-February and that's all.
So one of the goals that we have, what I asked, we're looking at facilities and doing the study. We're going to have to look at some expansion.
Yeah, I have engaged Friar and Associates. Friar's done a lot of work around the city, actually has seen business. We're going to do a study of a couple of schools. There's some schools that really, there's no point in studying, there's no ground or land left at Park Avenue and those places. It's just there's no physical space to put anything. So there's a few schools, like there's a little bit of green grass, a lot of facilities, we're going to take a look at that.
Is there a timeline on that?
Right now, I've got Friar looking at it. I need some pricing, some firming hours. It's not a ton of money to do studies for a school. We have to make some selections on schools. Hey, looking at Counter-Catholic, I have a site for facilities, meaning this gets down to count at some point, I'll talk about it.
Back to the west side, once they're in place and they're open, right, right, just see how the operation is.
Sure, definitely. One million dollars, we pay two hundred grand for, achieve classroom improvement. Now, they're all set and done, the colors match, everything they do look, it is kind of all nicely, just one big pile of lumber.
We're going to have to come around, you guys are a timeline, I think, what, three years out, we're going to have to have some.
That's the point.
Right, we have an agreement that we've just finalized. We have an agreement that we've just finalized for a few years for our, I'll mention right now. We didn't make it expanded because I think that we need to look at some other facilities. As soon as we have our meeting, we'll have the study to confirm. The enrollment is here, that's not the question. It's going to be in terms of how we're utilizing the buildings. Were we occupying spaces that we shouldn't be occupying?
Yep.
We cannot hear over the sound.
We're going to have to look at spaces that utilization, because we're beginning to use space that we shouldn't be using. Right? And we all know that. So Joe has been working with the principals. We built some walls, we've done some things. But we're about, there isn't any sister school arrangements because everybody's been crowded. So, you know, I would say no more than three years, we're going to have to be able to do something. So soon we get the study, and then we get our plans together, then we need to go and follow the city.
Every time we read the news times, apartment development is concerning. I was talking to Dean in the mayor's office as well, and it's, you know, mind funds and things are on the matrix. So I don't think that's going to be a full-blown center over there that's going on. But there's definitely concerns for the west side development. Still, still happening as we speak. Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'll identify the schools, it's not a long list. Elsford Abbey School has no green grass left, so there's no, no stuff there. So again, it's not a lengthy list of schools to study.
So that's a very high priority for us. You've got questions with that? Anything on the budget you want to update before?
The board should be aware, I mean, I have the financials yet. You'll see those in the following, the second meeting of October, you'll get the September financials. The board should be concerned, we have seen some additional hiring. As Dr. Self said, we've got six FTEs or so that are running through the hopper. That's about what's called four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand worth of salaries. So that's a continued concern. And health looks to be in line, but, you know, always mindful of salary accounts. We are running a deficit there at this moment. We're still seven hundred grand, so it's early days. I always tell that, I wish to panic, but yeah. But we've got to definitely just shift on the Alliance grant now. Actually, that's just going to solidify the state on that. Those pieces, they'll be tied along with the coaches like we did last year. So, you know, not, not in panic, but definitely a little, little, every year we do this, but it's a little hotter than last year. The board is just going to be a little hotter.
Anything else on the budget?
No, I'm done.
There are two items I didn't have, and I apologize, but just a follow-up. One was a question at the board meeting, and then it was a question from the community. So do you have something to follow up with?
Uh, yeah, so, so last week, sorry, the last board meeting, we didn't get a chance to meet with one of our community members with regards to specific types of training that we should be looking at, with regards to working with our LGP families. So we're reviewing that now, and we're having lots of conversations about the different types of professional development and the needs of both our students and our faculty. So we're looking to further investigate that, potentially invest something in our teacher reduction program and orientations that we've been foundational training in some key areas that we feel are more covered for all our staff.
Then there's a question about lunch. You want to raise this?
Yeah, as the board knows, we do have a, we call it cheese sandwich policy for folks that want negative balances. I did speak to Mr. Ball, who's the director of our school lunch program from CICSO. And as the board knows, they are, the school lunch employees are actually Board of Education employees. So we have a conversation about, you know, process with lunch line, those sorts of things. If a student does have a negative balance, there is any change that happens in the lunch line. It's not, you know, we hate doing it, but in a sense, we feel a negative balance is probably there on students. We don't issue that unless you're over twenty-five knowledge. We do work through the school social workers and try to give folks, you know, free lunch applications and identify those. We definitely work with those families all the time on those. So I did speak to Mary about, you know, going over with the lunch, lunch folks, just kind of procedural and through the line, how that works, and try to make it a little more sort of this process. I'm thinking this was a one-off event, and how it went. But we'll definitely review policy procedures around how this is.
So along those lines, there's some things that are on the horizon that's going to impact, and maybe you want to share with us?
Yeah, just so the board knows, we haven't talked about it yet, because again, it's not October one. But your free and loose lunch numbers are, last year, you were fifty, fifty-six percent free and loose lunch. Today, you said sixty-five percent. But inside that number, there's what's called directly certified. Directly certified is students that are receiving Husky food stamps. They are, I'll call it, you know, they are certified before we get, before they come to our doorstep for free and loose lunch. When a district goes above forty percent, it works called a CUP district, or Community Eligible Department. So in other words, at that point, everyone that runs goes to our lunch line, your lunch is being free. It's supposed to release paperwork and, and it's a bureaucracy and a lunch bar, because you have so many applications to come through. It's a, it's a good thing, but it's a change of Danberg. I think that's, you know, why I had it quite often, be forty-eight percent, fifty percent. I mean, you guys have moved significantly in the last couple of years. We are getting more direct feeds in from Medicare, Medicaid, and those sort of programs. That's why the records certified are moving up. But I think it's a, it's a real change here, right? We'll definitely, it's good, it's good for the families, it's good things, it's just a different, different change. I don't know what we are. Sixty-five percent is very high. Rogers Park, probably over eighty percent this year, October one. So it's definitely a change. The change in our Title I layout and demographic inside of those. So, obviously, the, back to the cheese sandwich issue, that, that will be regated next year, I think, because that will be, everyone will go to snack, in all senses, will still be a charge, charge account, but the actual lunch. I don't see those numbers moving a lot. You're forty-four percent right now. I don't see a big dip in the move up. Folks are calling, we're processing applications here, actually, late, late before this, there's quite a few.
Just to clarify, I think that the comments that we're seeing in the community, they're not so much regarding the actual cheese sandwich policy, more so much of the action of the lunch worker throwing the actual food that's not cheese sandwich away. And I'm, I'm really glad you reached out and clarified to me that there are our employees. So I'm thinking that there is a training and policy that we can just put in place so that, I think, the act of throwing the food away in front of the student is really what parents are upset about. And also to comment on the curriculum question, there is a phenomenal book that I use at home. My elder self is very little, so it's appropriate for even kind of, it's called Completely Different, by Todd Hart. And what I like about that book is that it includes all different types of communities, from, you know, with children with special needs, children with different languages, LG, LGBTQ community members. It really walks the child through being okay to be different in very different ways. And I think that if we're going to take on that request of community member, if we can use that as a tool for all differences, I think that would be a worthwhile to do.
So I, just for the board, I've been saying for two years, you know, Danberg is in the same take of a lot of different things. The blend of, of culture has changed, and the experiences that we're having in the question has really been the back. And you heard some of it today. You're going to hear more of it when Anne comes up and we start talking about our initiatives and how we have to handle the teaching and learning and the resources. It's hard for people to work with and be around and build, build these skills for kids. I've been concerned, I know the board keeps talking about the budget, you know, that's an argument that we always have. I don't continue to have, but, you know, I say, we're going to have to figure out some way of being able to focus our money and let the public know that neighbors change and step up and assist us in, in working with our youngsters. The primary building, the primary teachers, and Anne, and summer programming. You were kidding me before about the balances, right? That money that was helping us work on the gap is just going away. The work that you saw up here, you noticed in the September to May. The issue for us, quite frankly, is September to October, the summer slot. We gained a lot by the time we come in by October, the kids are catching up. And then they'll leave at a level, then come back and we send them back, which means we're constantly catching up. These summer programs that we're trying to implement are just crucial. I don't see them as optional anymore. So we've got to figure out ways to do that. The facilities are going to drop in your pocket. You have no, you have no place to go with the ask for that. But the resources are important, how we use the resources. With our delegation, we're going to have to support the Alliance money. City, and I've said to you every year, has not touched that. That has been, how much is it now?
Eight point four.
Eight point four million dollars.
Four, nine point four.
Nine point, that's going towards the work that we're talking about. So with, with our delegation, it's just so important for that to continue. We're in line for a million dollars more, are we not?
Joe, it's not.
Oh, the buying of budget is done.
I know, but according to the void...
According to some, just I've seen the new ECS formula, I mean, I'm not...
What?
I'm not betting on that.
Was there anything supposed to be in there?
There is some, there is, the new formula is going to kick into effect, but the formula has to be funded. So there's no, unlike other years where we have a two-year budget, this is kind of the opposite. We all know random government, random budgets. So there's, there is no semblance of what the next year's funding looks like. That could be a totally different dynamic.
Well, I will, you know, if, if that doesn't come, and we all put our hands, the money for Alliance is coming at the rate that we have it now. We don't know if it's going to increase.
Board has over three million dollars of debt around teachers inside.
What I'm saying to you, Joe, the money that we have in Alliance is there for a number of years. We don't know about...
Right, we don't know what that funding level will look like. I'd be very surprised if the board is going to see a decrease in those funds. But obviously, in Danberg, when you have those funds, they move up. It's really not, it's not about staying even. It's about a million or million and a half growth in that category here. That's, there's no other way to make our budget work.
So when we talk to our delegation, they need to...
Yeah, we'll, Ryan will be engaged pretty soon, obviously, his lines are obvious. So we'll have that meeting fairly short, or once we, they have a whole thing called a November election.
I don't have any more questions.
Any other questions? We're going on discussion of the draft two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen goals in our packet.
Some of the feedback I received in the board, I think included in here, if not kind of let me know. One thing's on, and I appreciate the multiple years of our, our goals. It helps us align the work that we're doing. These goals are aligned with the administrative's goals. And then as the teachers sit there, what we call slums there goals, it's aligned with, with these. So we have a structure in place that we're all moving forward, in this case, to, to that growth in student learning and achievement, and have students college and career rate, and a number of activities. What you asked me to do, and what I've done, is I've tried to break down some more reporting back, so we can look at it over time. Some of the stuff that you show on SBACK, I think the October meeting, we have in the first round of feedback.
Yes.
Is October. Then we'll be talking about the testing report, and then we'll look at the benchmarks as we go along the year to get to spring benchmarks. So that will give you time, data over time on how we're moving ahead. We did move the standard up in terms of achievement on our SBACK. We felt after two years that would be appropriate. So I think this kind of will, will lay out the information that you'll find useful. If not, let me know, I can make the adjustment. Family, school, and community partner, Anne left. We put a lot of work in here as an area, particularly the grant that Anne and Dr. V is working on. He's embedded in here. We're working with the PTOs in terms of a face center, making, trying to get the PTOs more involved in the district and, and what's going on in their schools by creating at least a common calendar. That's been a goal, and we'll see if we can achieve that. It sounds kind of mundane, but it's somewhat difficult to get off the ground. So that'll be something. But the key strategies of working with and looking at group courses for inequities, it's going to be work that's going to be going on and on. And that's embedded in this family and community partnership work. The work that David's doing, we have other schools that are doing work, but not at that level. When it was decided to be funded, Mark was funded for it. The other, the other schools were not. They're doing the activities, but not to the extent that he's doing there. So we're trying to transfer some of that into the other buildings. Fiscal responsibility, a little bit about the, the facilities is a big thing. And then work goes down from one. We have a few grants that already started down that venue. You know, as, as we move along, how technology can help the work that we're doing. So that's something that we'll be working on over time. The coherence plan for organization learning, we spent some time in the central office trying to redefine the work that we do so that, that it's not just policy making, but it's actually working and being in schools and helping principals work through their issues. Sounds like, oh, what have you guys been doing? Sometimes the work that we do, it's kind of one-sided. So we're trying to, after some time and reflection, working with principals in a, in a different way. Also, we have a delta teacher program. We're trying to develop more of our lead teacher leaders. We have something that Kim is working on with the union. I told the board we were trying to do this last year, where there'll be kind of a lead teacher in each elementary, because principals need the help. So that'll be one of our Aspen programs. And there'll be some seminars during the year, as the people that pick up these aside decisions can participate in some leadership training. So if they decide not to be an administrator, it's fine, they can be a teacher leader. And there's a lot of opportunity in a school's to be a leader. I'm looking at the cabinet, folks. Anybody ever handed that? Anne left. Anne, anyone hand that?
Questions, special questions, ones?
Um, no, I think this is the part where I'm just, as we're looking at the superintendent goals for coming year. And the superintendent graduation committee met this afternoon. We had, I think, a very good meeting. And I'm going to personally thank all the people for coming out and listening to us discuss the superintendent goals and what we see the board moving forward. And we would like to offer to the chairperson to set up a board workshop. And we would like to have that, that information to have as soon as possible, to set up a board workshop. So we can all come together, test it for, and go over the goals, and have a whole discussion that we can set. And we'll do that in October, on a Saturday morning, from eight to twelve p.m.
In particular, Saturday, you have nine?
No.
I think we have to make sure there's a bill for, on board, maybe.
Thought we would try to push it for the next two weeks, so we want to hold. Because time is of the essence, we felt. You know, we didn't want to get late to November, get started holidays and all that.
So in the next year.
The next two weeks. And the other thing was, if we decide on whether we want to use a facilitator.
We have someone from the community consultant meeting.
So clarity for me, guys, you want to have a workshop on a Saturday to go over these goals? Is that right here?
There will be a part about this stuff.
Okay, I'm just trying to prepare for that.
It'll be a combination.
Well, I don't have the computer, I'm going to have to...
Sign off.
Oh, I'm all in there.
We were talking at your house.
Okay, come on in. I'm trying to figure out what we need to do.
We just wanted to see if the place is open and we have something to give for the new company.
This is last night.
Would you want to attempt to do it a little differently? Say no if you want to do it. We have the new bike box, the theater, which is set up with, so we can open it up and, you know, the washing.
Oh, yeah.
Would you like to have that instead of here? That might be easier because it's open and...
That, oh, it's hard to find athletic, we don't have, so it's easy to facilitate.
All right. So you gave me a date, and then, did you need someone to facilitate?
Uh, someone, Gabriel.
You want Gabriel, you want me to ask Jonathan? Have you seen Jonathan? Whoever doesn't possess any money? I could ask, Sean, I could ask Paul. I could ask, sure, I could ask, okay. When we get a date, I'll call, if I can't get anyone from there, I'll talk to Jonathan, maybe get someone from there.
You want to schedule it for the 13th or the 20th, given that we have.
I can do it at 20, I can do it at 13.
Can we just have?
13, and see if we have someone from Gabriel.
13, yes.
Okay, so I have October 13, we're going to aim for the high school from 8 to 12.
I'd like you to, um, say, remember those.
We have information next. Agreement for child nutrition programs.
Joe, you have any time on that?
No, I was just so you and I are sense convenient, approve something for the board, for the board.
Um, no, just information.
Any questions, board? Danbury Mars Initiative on September 28 at 5 to 9 p.m. There's a flyer in the packet that says it's relating on social media as well. All are invited. And that's the testing report scheduled for October 10 for the meeting.
Yeah, I had said, I thought maybe it was going to be this one, just wanted you to do it the next one. We just received everything, so we're putting it together, we should have it that night. We'll obviously get it to you Friday before, so they have a few days to go over. But you have something more information, if you want to turn around. You'll be seeing, these are on the app. We were working on that, we mentioned, as you know, that was a big issue for us yesterday. So actually, we are getting names, so anybody that has a business and would like to take a sign, we have a few to take.
Actually, um, rather than you try to figure out, one of you sent me a name, so I didn't want to give you a name.
One at a time, one work at a time. That's great.
We're very long, the board chairperson's report. The cave convention, November 16 through 17, there's an application in the packet. I know you can figure out the dates one day, not at all, is anyone planning on going?
Just a Debbie now, if you guys know, we can hold them.
There's also a candy conference, a municipalities conference coming up also, it's a little bit off the chief's side. I went to a workshop this summer, I thought it was valuable, it was worth my time. That, I don't know off the top of my head, I think it's around the same time. But I can give that to you. Any other board comments, communications?
I just want to thank the board members at the gala, and Dr. Sal, and Dr. Paulson, and everybody from the Edward High School team that went to the American Dream Awards, we had a good presentation for our students from the AHS. And it was a really successful event. Our very own Sandy Sanchez won the personal year award, we had several students from our central district that won $10,000 scholarships. And I really thank you guys for supporting her coming up.
One of our home received awards, Sandy Sanchez, scholarship, which was great, which was, it was an excellent event, I really enjoyed being there. It was well done, thank you.
Moving right along, if nobody else has anything else. Executive session, draft of motion at the board education meeting in executive session with the purpose of discussing contract negotiations with Danbury Schools Administrators Association.
Good night, Anne, thank you.